Morning, councillors and staff, welcome to our special meeting. Um, is someone doing the acknowledging of the country?
I've got it here.
Yes, Stuart, thank you.
We would like to acknowledge the traditional owners and custodians of this land, the kabi kabi on which this event is taking place. We'd like to acknowledge the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and their ongoing connection to land, sea and community. We pay respects to the elders past, present and emerging, and also extend that respect to all other people present. Thank you.
Our reports in place of absence. Describe your ventures, councillors, if you want me to explain. Uh, thank you. Um, before we begin, I think it would be pertinent to take a moment, um, for silence to consider and remember those who have been, uh, passed away recently in the tragic circumstances. All right, guys. The document's attached with him in print, so it was passed. Yes. Thank you. A sad thing. Um, we'll move on to section three, uh, item three point one, the operational plan for twenty-three, twenty-four. Mr Lewis and Miss Hatch.
Um, through Mr Mayor, this, um, for hand over to Miss Hatch, this is a key, um, document that underpins the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and is a requirement under section one seventy-four of the local government regulation.
So through you, Mr Mayor, the operational budget has been prepared in consultation with managers, directors across the organisation. And it contains thirty-two items of work programmes that lead towards, um, reaching the goals of the corporate plan. I'll take the report as being read. Um, are there any questions on the report or the document?
Any questions, councillors? Councillor Devereux?
Thank you. Through the mayor, I do have a question, just more for, um, for the community so they understand how it works. You've mentioned on, it's been mentioned on page seven, Australian carbon, carbon credit units, thirty-one thousand. It's page fifty-eight of the report, page seven of this, of the agenda, page seven of the report, and it's on the right third. Down.
Australian carbon credits, one thousand.
So how does that benefit the rate payer? Just so that there's an awareness of that.
I might have to hand over to the Director of Community Sustainability for that question.
Sorry?
On page seven of the operational plan, it's talking about the Australian carbon credits created thirty-one thousand. What is that, what meaning does that have to the rate payers?
Uh, it's essentially just a basic revenue coming in from the relationship with L G I, uh, the gas split, uh, the volume.
So there's an income from that. All right. Thank you. Where is that reflected in the budget? Is that it?
Oh, just the general revenue.
Other, it would be under other revenue.
Other revenue. Thank you very much.
Um, and it's probably worth noting that that hasn't always been the case, but just, uh, by recent works through the waste team, we've actually managed to procure that revenue stream.
That's wonderful.
Through you, Mr Mayor, that's only come in this year. Um, it's about pretty much all that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Stuart.
Um, Mr Mayor, I've got a question about, um, item number seventeen on page sixty-seven. And it's got the planning scheme to be in draft format for community consultation by end of this year. Is that for community consultation or is that for the state interest check or is that the same? Have a bit of explanation, makes a means.
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, believe, Miss Hatch.
Yeah, through, through you, Mr Mayor. It's, um, wording that the audience will understand. Uh, the state planning policies, there are processes of consultation, um, throughout the development of a planning scheme. The policy papers are out at the moment, but not everyone understands policy phases. Um, community consultation is occurring and will continue to occur, and even the state consultation process is community focused. So it's wording, but it's so that everyone understands, um, what the consultation means, that it is occurring. Um, but what you're talking is more probably technical communication where people who understand and know more about the planning phases. Um, do they, does it really need to be clarified to that extent?
I just, I just thought it could be a bit confusing because it goes to the state interest check in the financial, end of this calendar year, hopefully. And we go to community consultation sometime, hopefully next year. So in that sense, it's actually a bit misleading.
Um, through you, Mr Mayor, again, it is, um, terminology. And even in the state check, it's containing five topics that they cover. Are you talking about community consultation where the rate payer or where they actually had their say? The state government through to quarter two, it's still heavily concentrated on the community. So it is just, it is wording and it depends on, um.
And through you, Mr Mayor, there are essentially two, uh, sets of consultation, which I think is causing the confusion. Um, the set plan policy papers are released now, uh, there is consultation occurring on those. Um, that's with key stakeholders and interested party groups. Uh, those policy papers below the formulation of a, a draft, uh, planning scheme. That draft planning scheme, as councillor Stuart quite rightly refers to, uh, will go for state interest check, uh, in December. Um, uh, that is the timeline that we've currently got on that plan, um, that is what the officers are aiming for. Uh, and then once that comes back from the state government, uh, we're required, I suppose, the Planning Act to undertake formal consultation with the community. Uh, and that could occur, although that will occur anytime after, uh, the state government sends back um, their views on the state's interest check of the planning scheme. Um, so that theoretically could be three, six or even longer months um, after it's gone for state interest check with, um. They took approximately six months with the latest amendment package, amendment package three. Um, and so we are presuming it will be about six months from the state's interest check. So, uh, consultation is occurring now and into Q two. State interest check, uh, it is, is targeted for the end of Q two. And then it will return from state government and there'll be formal community consultation on the adoption of the plan, of the final plan, the final draft plan, um, in, uh, in the following, uh, period, approximately six months.
Uh, councillor Stuart, through the chair, um, does that accord with what was discussed in council's previous meeting?
What the director just said does, what this says is, isn't, I'd say is not right. Because there's not community, there's community consultation at the moment on the policies, not on the scheme. The community consultation on the scheme may not be for another twelve months in the best case scenario.
I, uh, approximately, uh, I would hope it's quicker than twelve months, but yes, councillor.
Well, if it goes to state interest, six months, that brings it back to this time next year.
So we should amend the document to what was consistent with the initial discussions, if that's, if that's still achievable, Mr Mayor.
Um, to you, uh, Mr Mayor, there's probably two amendments that could be made. Uh, one is to, uh, leave it as quarter two, um, and, uh, reflect the state's interest check in there. Um, so it would be completed for state's interest check in quarter two. Or, uh, because this references community consultation, uh, move that to the appropriate timeline that was put in the original, uh, documentation of the engagement plan.
It's be quarter four.
Which is be quarter four.
Councillor Miller.
Uh, Mr Mayor, the operational plan, we can amend it anytime, um, through, uh, um, resident, not earlier meeting, so this could be potentially looked into further and further clarified and possibly amended, um, later.
Yes, uh, through you, Mr Mayor, yes, you can amend the operational plan at any time. And there is a requirement, the, uh, the progress against the, the operational plan is to be reported to council on a quarterly basis, so you could make those amendments if council say wished at the first quarterly review.
I'm just a bit confused myself. I thought there was a strong message from council that the planning scheme was something that, um, should be very much fully finished, uh, before March next year, so that, um, so that the councillors, these councillors here who are best aware of the process and been most engaged in the process could, could have everything kicked off. Um, rather than, you know, if there is, uh, a change in the elected parties at the election, that we don't end up going back to square one and, and all, uh, those councillors don't decide to take the whole document back to square one and start the process again and any millions that go with it. Um, I'm just, I, I thought we were on a timeframe that's very different to what I'm seeing. That was my understanding. Councillor Stuart.
Um, Mr Mayor, I think it's been flagged for some time, that, um, it's a very tight time schedule and it's been stated for quite some time that state interest check was aiming for the planning, the draft planning scheme for state inter- check, check, check by the end of this year. And so I, I think that timetable's been actually fairly clear for six months.
Councillor Miller.
Mr Mayor, uh, even though we're looking for a state interest check by the end of the year, I'm noticing that some of our timeframes have been pushed back with community consultation and things like that. I know we aren't running concurrent stuff. My just got concern, this is why, you know, I'd like to go away and maybe have come back for a suggestion, is are we actually pushing a tight timeframe to have that by December this year for a state interest check? Because when it goes to state interest check, that's pretty much what we're proposing to go in and I would hate, because it's such a major document, I'd like to get it right first. And I know it is something that wanted to get done in sooner, but there has been a lot of circumstances that have prevented that. Uh, it's, yeah, so I've just, I'm just flagging concern and impossibility. I mean, it couldn't have been looked at and what timeframe is actually needed. Not, I know what we're directing, but I'd like to also have it reflected, what is needed to have a really good document.
Um, through you, Mr Mayor, offices are still, um, pursuing a state's interest check, uh, in December. Um, that was the original, uh, plan that was presented to council probably eighteen months ago. Uh, it was also, uh, the engagement plan that was adopted by council or was workshopped by council about twelve months ago, I think. Um, the, those, those dates that were presented then have not been changed. They've recently been reinforced through the planning workshops that have been going on. Officers are, uh, looking at, uh, the programme. We are running a number of concurrent items and we're currently reviewing with a view. And we advise the portfolio councillors that we'll be bringing an update on the planning scheme to councillors in the next couple of months, uh, August, September. Uh, we are reviewing those timelines, but that is still the deadline as, as I speak.
So we're saying the deadline is up there, that, that, the, the deadline is what initially was decided by council or, or, um, but we're not going to meet that, is it?
That, these deadlines, Mr Mayor, are, are the same deadlines that, uh, we've been telling council for approximately eighteen months. Um, is it a challenge? And councillor Stuart's, um, uh, one of the portfolio councillors, so he's asked some questions. Uh, are we on time? We've had some delays with some of our reports, uh, coming from consultants. Um, there are some other factors involved in those reports and the policy workshops, we've addressed some of that, a, a little bit of the policy workshops that have been going on. But in essence, the timelines that you were seeing in this operational plan, uh, if it said Q four for the, the scheme consultation, um, are the timelines that we have continued to present to council for, uh, over a year?
So item seventeen with the planning scheme draft format for community consultation by Q two, twenty-three, twenty-four, that, we're going to meet that or not?
But we, we, the scheme.
That's, that's my understanding and I'm assuming that based on the presentations that councillors have had, um, and the fact that it's in here, that I, I, I'm just trying to understand this, this confusion. There must have been confusion with the creators of the document because they put it in the document. And my discussions with a number of councillors were all on the same timeframe. There may be other councillors that feel that was agreed to go further out. Um, but we were very, um, clear that we wanted to get through this body of work with councillors that have the understanding of, of the plan, um, and how it fits in because they've had a little bit of experience in local government, rather than, uh, putting our region into a situation where you may have a number of newer councillors that don't, um, that are still learning the ropes and, and going through such a significant document. So my question is, is number seventeen right or is it not?
Through you, Mr Mayor, as it currently sits, um, there are two words, uh, two bits in there that are confusing people. Consultation is ongoing now on the policies. If, if, if that remain, if it says policies in there, it is right. If, if, if it says consultation on the planning scheme, that will be Q four. The state's interest check submission, which we brought to councillors in December at this stage, um, that was the Q two target, the state's interest check, not the consultation on the planning scheme. That has to occur when the state government have reviewed it. The state government always, and, and we've, we've brought this to council, I wrote it down as well, always could take time to return it to us after we've gone for state interest check. Um, so if it says scheme, uh, in, in this operational plan item, it is Q four. If it is state interest check, it will be December, which is the timeline that we've always, as councillor Stuart just referred to, we've always presented to councillors in workshops and meetings.
So through the chair, perhaps, the way to go would be to say that the state, under item seventeen, the state interest check is planned for December, by December twenty-twenty-three?
That's correct.
And, and then that was the agreement and of course, uh, because this document is subject to revision, so then if that becomes something that we have to put back, we can look at it again, that if everyone's happy with that sort of arrangement. Happy with that, councillors?
It's been what was, we've, council agreed to ages ago, that the state interest check by end of the year.
Any other questions, councillor?
Through that, um, so page, was it thirteen of the operational plan, which is page sixty-three of the agenda? It was just about, it's about, um, economic development. The very first paragraph there, I was just a bit confused with, so, um, yeah, the one that says in alignment with Kipiriji Council, it's a plan for twenty-two to twenty-seven, yep? And it talks about focusing on twenty-seventeen to twenty-two, and I was confused. Is that just a typo? Or you're actually saying you want to go look back five years and use that to look forward? Because I didn't see any other mention of that, although you've got the little figures to the right-hand side based on, um, two, so. Yeah, have a read, so, just, I was just confused with the whole.
That's just that the health check was, that health check, I think, was from private consultants that came in and, um, provided us the presentation. I think that's what the dates that they went back and checked through their history. That's right, um.
That's great.
Yes.
Yeah, so it is right, you're, you're looking back.
Yes, yes.
And, and not that it's sort of relevant to this discussion, but looking at the, uh, four things on the right-hand side, top four. I mean, I've got a bad memory, but I just remember, uh, forestry and fisheries being a major, doesn't even rate anymore? Or is that just in terms of dollars or something?
Well, that was what was on the, on, sorry, um, it was on a presentation and across all of the information that's even coming through from disaster management, the healthcare and social assistance, that is top.
Yeah, 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 that always was. I just thought.
Not always, of course. It had gone from forestry, even when we did the corporate plan back in twenty-two. But that was on, um, census, that was to two thousand and sixteen, so the information's all been updated since then. And as it's progressed, now healthcare and social assistance is.
But forestry was up there. It's, it's fine. It's, it's dropped off the table. I'm not saying it's wrong or anything, it's just like, that's just interesting to notice that it's gone the other way so quickly, but anyway.
Through you, Mr Mayor, um, councillor Polly, this body of work is, is ongoing, so we've just conducted a quite a high level assessment at the moment, but there'll be some metrics come out over the next couple of months and some detail as to why those industries have changed.
Yeah, that's all good.
Any other questions, councillors? Um, recommendation there, there's someone to move. Councillor Mill and someone to second. Councillor Polly, councillor Mill to speak.
Our operational plan is our yearly plan to, uh, further our corporate plan. I do note that our corporate plan or parts of that are hit in this operational plan, I mean, activated, uh, which is really good. It's a, quite a busy plan, I did notice. We've got things with aging in place, um, community recovery, arts and culture, local law reviews, um, environmental, social governance, um, biosecurity, waste strategies, landfill solutions, native title and cultural heritage, um, asset management plans, which, uh, I looked at and I was really glad to see that our service standard methodology is going to be, uh, concurrent with that and incorporating, which is something that we can use for further budgeting, which is, um, uh, basically a metric that we're missing in council, um, active strategies, water security, uh, and our financial literacy and our grid integration to, um, council. So it's a very, very busy operational plan, but I think it's really good that we're at a stage now with council where we can actually start moving forward with all of these things and, um, just grow as a council. So I'm happy with this operational plan. Yeah, there are some clarifications that we need to probably make on some minor stuff, but in a whole, there is a lot going on and I hope the organisation, um, can hit it. Yeah, good.
Councillor Clonagh.
Well, look, it's a plan that's in process, that's the main thing in it, so it's good. So we've got thirty-two things to aim for. And I'm probably looking forward more to the, was it quarterly updates?
Yes.
How we are reaching those targets as we go through the year.
Two speakers for the recommendation, three speakers against, the other speaker's for, speakers against, speakers for.
You never know.
Councillor Devereux to speak for.
Thank you. Um, one of the most exciting things, I think, in the whole, um, report is number sixteen A, which is the star rating, uh, service levels for roads. And I, I think it's exciting because the community will get a lot of benefit from it when it comes out. They'll know, um, where their road sits within the, the operational plan, um, how long it should be, uh, if there's a problem to have it looked at and fixed and all the rest of it. I think it's going to clear things right up for, for the majority of, um, rate payers who have issues with roads and stuff at the moment, which obviously with, you know, the twenty-six year with that report that we got and then with the, the flood, uh, the rain events and, and all the issues we've had there and waiting for the funds and everything else. So I'm very excited about this. Um, I've been excited since the moment I was told we were getting it. It is a shame that it's going to come in, uh, after, straight after the next election, rather than while we're all sitting here together. Um, but for the community, I think it's, it's going to be excellent. So I just thank the organisation for that and I just wanted to draw the community's attention to it.
Any other speakers for or against? Councillor Stuart.
Mr Mayor, can I just check, are we altering number seventeen to be realistic? Are we altering seventeen so it's instead of community consultation, it's state interest check? Because that's what is realistic.
That was, that was the intent.
I just want to double check.
Okay. If we can, yeah, so that will be amended, uh, in the document.
Because I, I don't want to give half the impossible task.
Any other questions, councillors? Councillor Mill de Clasch.
Uh, like I said, this is a, um, a good document, um, for moving the organisation forward, like all plans. They probably last about five minutes and a mother, that's what happens. However, we are given, um, quarterly updates on where that is going and there are changes, so it is a fluid. Uh, I did depreciate councillor Devereux's star rating for roads, which is also going to parks, stormwater, water, wastewater. That rating system will enable us to communicate better with the public on, uh, levels and, uh, of service. And then we can, yeah, engage more and get to understand where we can improve or where we can maybe make some savings. So I'm pretty happy with this as the, uh, including the action, item seventeen amendment. And I'm happy for it to have this moved through.
With that, councillors, we'll go to the vote. Are those in favour? Against? Harry, thank you. Item three point two, the twenty-three, twenty-four revenue policy. Mr Lewis, Miss Heatherall.
Um, through you, Mr Mayor, I might hand over to Miss Heatherall as, as herself and her team have done the substantial amount of work for the adoption of the budget. Um, before we move into the budget documents, I might also make a commentary in relation to the, uh, agenda item. Now, last night, um, there were some very minor, um, administrative changes to that document. One was, um, amending category two in the revenue statement, uh, just so that it was mutually explicit to category three. Um, there's no changes to councillor's position and we could have left the document as it stood, but we've had to clarify that for future reference. On page forty-two of the agenda, there was a date format issue in relation to twenty-thirty-two, which reflected in that document is nineteen oh five, that has also been adjusted. And in relation to the statement of changes in equity, we were doing a final proof checks late yesterday and we uncovered that whilst the totals were correct, some of the, uh, data in relation to the asset revaluation reserve were picking up an incorrect cell. So we've adjusted that. Again, there's been no changes to any of the budget, um, uh, results, uh, the totals in the statements are correct and there's no changes to council's, uh, final budgeted, uh, position. The totals in the statements are correct and there's no changes to council's final budgeted position.
Um, well, I'll hand over Miss Heatherall now and then we'll hear from councillors. Is there anything you wish to add?
Yeah, I was going to specifically to that.
Okay, councillor Deveraux.
I was just going to ask if it might be possible through the mayor, if it might be possible, when there are changes like that then, particularly when it's a seven hundred, sorry, a couple of hundred pages, just to maybe mention the three things or whatever, since it's not like a word document where it's, you can highlight to the side or anything. So it just might save a little bit of stress on behalf of councillors that are trying to find out what's been changed. Thank you.
Miss Heatherall?
Morning, Mr. Mayor and councillors. The next, I think, six reports are actually in relation to the budget adoption. And the first report in front of you is in relation to the adoption of the revenue policy. The revenue policy is an overarching policy document relating to the making of rates and charges and levying of those rates and charges. It defines the scope that we can apply for granting concessions for rates and charges. It talks about recovery of overdue rates and charges, methods of seeking cost recovery fees, and also the extent of funding for infrastructure charges. The two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four revenue policy is before you for your consideration.
Any questions, councillors? There are no questions. We have a recommendation for, is there someone to move? Councillor Stewart, someone to second. Councillor Polly, councillor Stewart to speak.
Mr. Mayor, like any organisation, we need our revenue. The principles in this policy are equity for white properties, user pays, meaningful contribution, predictability, fairness. And I guess it underlines the whole budget in a sense. So I am happy to move this revenue policy that we receive it.
Councillor Polly?
No, can I reiterate councillor Stewart's comments there? I think there's going to be a fair bit of, say, the same thing out of the next few policies. They're necessary documents, so they are what they are. Happy to approve this and move ahead.
Two speakers for the recommendation, any speakers against, any other speakers for, councillor Stewart to close.
Nothing further to add, thanks.
We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Harry, thank you. Item three point three, financial policies for twenty-three, twenty-four. And have Mr. Lewis, Miss Heatherall.
Mr. Mayor and councillors, this document is in relation to the financial policies that support the budget document. The local government regulation is quite prescriptive in terms of what it tells local governments they have to include as part of their budget documentation. The investment policy, the debt policy and the procurement policy are policies we need to review on an annual basis as part of our budget preparation. The rates and debt management and recovery policy and the financial hardship policy are best practice policies that we believe provide additional framework for council officers to be able to ensure that there is equity and ethics around the collection of outstanding rates and the offering of payment arrangements for those that are in financial hardship. The investment policy adds that we'll provide quarterly reports to council to ensure that the guidelines and framework around the investment policy that council sets out are adhered to. And you have confidence that we're investing those funds in accordance with the philosophy that you've laid out. The debt policy has flagged our forecast borrowings over the ten years of the budget and forecast. At this stage, for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, we estimate that we were borrowing five point three eight million dollars. And in two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, we've flagged that there'll be a two million dollar borrowing. That'll, of course, is subject to further adjustments as part of annual budgets in the future, depending on the asset management plans and the findings we get out of those. The procurement policy is reviewed. It sets out the framework where council can acquire materials and services during the year. And as I said, the debt recovery policy and the financial hardship policy are best practice policies to try and ensure that there is consistency in how the officers are able to assess and deal with ratepayers.
Any questions, councillors? Councillor Polly?
I've got three through the mayor. Okay, going back to, oh, sorry, okay, we've got this policy, right? It's in front of us now. We haven't sort of seen it for a year or so, and we just talked about track changes. So could, is it, could you distill, or are there any major changes to this policy over the ones from last year? Or it's pretty much steady as she goes?
The majority of them are refreshed for borrowings, for example. The debt policy hasn't changed. The others are reviewed and they're essentially the same as the prior year.
Okay, okay. So they've got questions and on that debt policy of page ten, you just talked about it. So two questions, the five point three eight, is that five million borrow this year and we're going to borrow another two million next year? Was that a running balance that?
No, that's five point three eight in twenty-three, twenty-four and then two million following.
So that'll be paid off. So I'm looking at it and going, nothing for the next nine years? Like, come on? You're not going to borrow nothing? I'm just surprised.
It's, there is forecast for no borrowings in those further eight years, primarily because we're not quite sure about what the impact will be with the asset management plans, so.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that Miss Heatherall's point at the end has been very pertinent.
Yep.
We, those, the zero borrowings are based on our current estimated program of works. We're waiting for the asset management plans to be finalized. And then when that information comes to light, we will update the borrowing policy for the twenty-four, twenty-five financial year to reflect those changes. It may well increase. I guess the good news from the council's perspective is our debt capacity is really high. We've got next to no debt. We've got a target of, I think it's less than sixty percent. Our ratio at the moment is sitting at less than twenty-three over the life of the model. So we're quietly confident that even with the issues that will come out of the asset management plans, they will be well within council's ability to fund those works with the debt policy. So again, very much a work in progress, but we've just forecast for the two years based on what we know is happening in the waste. And those, those things to be updated progressively as the asset management plans come to council for adoption.
I think also councillors probably, you know, we've worked hard over this last term to put ourselves or put the organisation in a community position where borrowing for significant infrastructure could take place. So it has been very much about repairing and I think council will decide particularly next budget in what investments they make in different infrastructure and that those borrowing amounts, well, I believe will definitely change. But at this point in time, it's probably, without the asset management plans, it's impossible to predict what those levels will be. And particularly to, in terms of what council wishes to do in the next, next term around infrastructure for the community, without something concrete in that space. Those, those numbers, I think, are best left at zero, how they are. I think that the thing to be aware of is that we actually have put the organisation in a position where borrowing is a possibility. We've done a lot of repair work over the last couple of years to get ourselves in that position. So we can invest in our community in the future.
And that's sort of my point. I'm just wondering whether it was, it's safer to make the allowance for, I don't know. I was going to say, why don't you look at history and go, we know we borrow a couple of million dollars every year for whatever. Well, is that going to change? So, and at the moment, you're saying, then you're saying that you shouldn't look at history because history was bad. They borrowed money for things they shouldn't have. And I just sort of thought, in general accounting terms, wouldn't it be better to just make the allowance? So no, we see all those reports and workshops we do where people are projecting out over ten years and what if we change this, what if we change that? The fact is, we're going to borrow something somewhere and that will have a significant impact. So those, those projected futures are really wrong at the moment.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We, our borrowing policy reflects our anticipated borrowings. We do assessments at the end of each financial year to determine whether we need those funds or not. As part of our restructuring of our finances and our return to ongoing financial sustainability, we've made an assessment over the last two financial years where we've projected borrowings. We haven't drawn those funds down because we haven't needed the cash to sustain the business. So even with the borrowings that are in the model at this juncture, we may not even draw those funds down if we don't need to at April thirtieth, June. And we will always try and maintain borrowings to project our capacity into the future. And as long as we have adequate cash to run the business, that's our primary aim at this point.
And I think that's a great thing. You're actually doing the right thing, but, I mean, I would have just put the allowance in there for something, just, because you can always not spend it. Great. It's very hard to go, oh, sorry, we're going to borrow another five million for something we didn't know it was going to be there, but, yeah.
Councillor Stewart, what have you got, any more, councillor?
No, sorry, that's it, thanks.
Councillor Stewart.
Um, so those proposed borrowings, Mr. Mayor, for this financial year, next financial year, that's to do with Onik Road and South Side Schemes, is it all? Yep, that's correct. And I think partly to, with regards to councillor Polly was saying, we actually haven't borrowed money over the last, since I've been on council, I don't think, if I remember right. Some of the borrowings we've had paying off actually go back to the days Tyro-Shire council and roadworks had done. And I think the question for us as councillors is what big projects do we want to do in the future? And we haven't made that decision. Now, we haven't scheduled in, say, building a library or building an indoor sports stadium or anything like that. So therefore, finance staff can't predict what borrowing is going to need.
Sorry, now I've got a question. Over that, so we haven't borrowed money, great. But then on page forty-one, it says that we, our debt at the moment is seventeen million. We've got that down to six point two. So there's obviously a lot of money, historical debt, still hanging out from way back, if we haven't borrowed nothing.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The borrowings were historic. They were quite a long time ago. I believe some of the last borrowings that we had were for the series treatment plant upgrade that was done at Gimby Treatment Plant. So that's, that's probably fifteen years ago. So the, the borrowings are historic. We did at one stage apply for an overdraft that we didn't need to use. So this council has been prudent in, in terms of whether or not we do actually draw down those borrowings. There needs to be a genuine need for it.
Yep, okay, interesting.
Question from Mr. Lewis. In your opinion, do you think council and panache, do you should have borrowed for some things that we didn't borrow for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, especially some of the major infrastructure assets. And that contributed to what Miss Heatherall was talking about previously in relation to our need for, for an overdraft facility. We came very close to needing that. And that was because we didn't, we had debt capacity, but we, we used our cash reserves. So we were forced into a position where we were running short of, I think it was in the first term of this council, that it received the budget from the previous council, it showed in its modeling that it didn't have sufficient cash to run the business on a day-to-day basis in the later half of the year.
Councillor Fredman?
Question, Mr. Lewis. The way I've been watching it and the way I understand it is that we have got enormous capacity in the next term to build projects with an intergenerational benefit. The next council is going to be in a fantastic position because of, because we've been damn tight for the last few years. And you're nodding, it is correct that in the future, we have got that capacity to, to see some fantastic intergenerational projects come on board. And I suppose we haven't got a lot to show, but we've achieved that level of stability, but the future looks good.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's correct. We have ensured that we've maintained our debt capacity. And a lot of our policy documents talk about intergenerational equity in terms of funding. And when council has used its cash reserves in the past, that hasn't allowed that to happen. But I guess our, our focus and the focus of council at this stage has been restoring our finances to get our operating result under control, to look at our cash reserves, but also maintain our cash, our debt capacity to fund those major bodies of work that the next council will want to undertake.
Mr. Mayor, taking you through the chair. Just tying together councillor Stewart, councillor Fredman's comments. With the priority plan of what projects are required and the foundational work that's being done, but also the asset management plan, we'll know what our actual needs are over the next, probably the two decades to some accuracy. And then that priority plan can then shape what the big projects can be for those next years as well. So it's all coming together.
Any other questions, councillors? Comments? Councillor Fredman's point and Mr. Lewis's reiteration, that we have done a lot of hard work. We've led within our means in difficult circumstances to restore our financial position so that we can now look to invest in those facilities that will benefit our community into the future. And it has been very challenging and there is always a temptation to go out and splash money and throw money around. But I congratulate all the councillors for maintaining a level head in difficult circumstances to put this community in a position that investment in the future is done in a sustainable financial manner. Are there, if there's no other questions, we have a recommendation there with a number of points. Is there someone to move? I don't rush, councillor Polly, someone to second, councillor Smorden, councillor Polly to speak.
Like I said, a lot of repeat of the same thing. It's a necessary policy. It's good to see it and let's move forward with it. Happy to recommend it.
Councillor Smorden?
Yeah, okay, councillor Polly's sentiments. We need to invest well, borrow well and borrow well. So we need these policies in place of them. Yes, sir.
Two speakers for the recommendation, any speakers against?
I'm going to ask, are we voting on five things in one go? Not one at a time, right?
Yep.
Um, I'm sorry, I've got a question then if I could. Yeah, I thought we were doing one at a time or, or, you know.
No?
Yep, I'm sorry. If I can, please. Yeah, okay. I've got a question in regards to the rates and charges, debt management and recovery policy. And so it's page ninety-nine of our documents there and it's page two. And it's just based on the timeframes. So we've got the recovery actions, twenty-one days after the rates noticed due date, fourteen days, we've gone to a reminder again. And then fourteen days after that letter's sent, we're onto the debt recovery agent. And from there, fourteen days later, final letter of demand. It's, it's just, we're sending out, you know, snarl communications as far as letters are concerned, and we're only giving two weeks for each thing to situations where people are in financial stress already. I'm just wondering, I know that when we came in, the, the timeframes were just very lax. And, and that's how people got into a bit of trouble there and council had to try and tighten it. I'm just concerned that we might be tightening it too much. Two weeks is hardly a lot of time when there's those situations, when we're racing into, it's less than three months all up. Less than three months from the due date and we're doing potential sale of land letters.
Would you suggest, councillor Deveraux, as an alternative?
I just, you know, not everyone gets paid fortnightly. If they're in financial stress, I think a month could at least give everyone a chance to get to that next pay packet to perhaps fix things up. That's.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we won't undertake any of these actions. We try, we try and contact the ratepayers with our best endeavours to get them to talk to us so that we arrange payment plans. We won't enter into a potential sale of land unless people haven't, have got outstanding rates and charges for a period of three years. So the timeframes are really generous, but we have to try and engage with our ratepayers who are in difficulty to make them aware of their obligations and try and work with them to get them to make payments to accordance with their debt. So these are all the issues where we fail to receive any correspondence or the ratepayer is not making any, any contact with us at all. So this is our process to try and engage with them.
And through the mayor, further that, I do understand that ultimately by getting them to contact council, we're doing the ratepayer a solid. I, I absolutely get that. And I've mentioned it many times, if people are in financial hardship, pick up the phone the moment you, you feel you are. That's the way to, to deal with it properly. Don't be scared to. Council has policies in place to help out. So when I look at things like we go to a debt recovery agency, there are costs involved there. That's right. So that comes in less than two months into the. So that comes in, uh, less than two months into the, the policy, but it's, and it's, what's the cost for that, do we know?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have the current.
It's, it's hundreds of dollars at, at least, yes, um, I've, I've got a figure in my, anyway, it doesn't matter, it's hundreds and hundreds of dollars. So again, within two months, we're, we're putting an extra burden onto the ratepayer that's already in financial hardship. And I just wonder if perhaps pushing it out, like I say, so that every ratepayer has that, that pay packet period come in so they can perhaps fix things up at each, each turn of the, um, of the clock there, so that's, tho- those are my thoughts.
Would you be suggesting an, an alteration to that policy?
I, I'd be suggesting we go to thirty days where it says fourteen on each of those.
Um, true, Mr. Mayor, it might be worth noting that the ratepayers already had their rate notice for thirty days before any of this action has commenced. So it's, it's, it's thirty days, then it's fourteen days after that, then it's fourteen days, so it is, it is quite burdens in its timeframe.
I understand that the ratepayers had it for that period of time, but they're in financial stress, so they, they've got to give, be given, I feel, a chance to get to that next one. That next, um, a chance to fix things up.
Through, through, Mr. Mayor, the, the issue is, these timeframes have been put in place because we're trying to actually communicate with the ratepayers prior to the next issue of rates, because that then adds additional burden to them. If we can, to, before we get to this point, if they can agree to the, the, um, payment plans, then the process stops.
Okay, so if I could, perhaps then, the one that really bothers me is the one where we go to the debt recovery agency, I'd be happy simply to push that one out, to give them that extra, extra chance to fix that up, because that is an additional burden, that's not helping them, that's an additional burden.
Yeah, that's, um, that's, sorry, um, that's on stage two, you're saying push that one.
Stage three, fourteen days after issue of letter of demand.
Stage two.
Stage, oh, sorry, stage two, yes.
Yeah.
Debt recovery.
Counselor Mill.
Mr. Mayor, have these timeframes changed since last year?
No, these are, these are the standard timeframes we introduced, uh, when we first brought this policy to council, uh, just shortly after, um, council was elected.
Um, so can we, can we modify that document, or can we adopt the recommendation with the understanding that those changes can be made?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it would have to be reflected in the, the adoption.
We'd need it, we'd need another line on there, um.
I'm happy to make a.
You're happy to move.
Amendment.
Move an amendment.
Can I ask a question, sir?
Counselor Paul.
I can ask, historically then, how often has it happened where you've had to engage and pay for a debt collector because they reached their thirty days or whatever? I know it's in the policy, and I know you say you don't actually sell houses till it's years down the track.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, every rates period where we issue the rates notices, we do get to the point where we do have to engage debt recovery and those costs are incurred.
Right, so it does happen?
Yep.
It's not, okay.
It's, it may not be for a substantial number of ratepayers, but we do follow that process, sorry.
I guess it's, it's worth noting that everything we're doing is trying to avoid getting to the position where we're selling properties.
Hmm.
Um, so we're trying to work with the ratepayers, listen to debt, but if they won't communicate with us, they won't engage with us, we're left with little option but to refer to debt collection.
So Counselor Devereux, the amendment you're, you're showing.
Uh, the amendment, and I'm not quite sure on the wording here, but, oh, does anyone else have any? Um, stage two.
Oh, I'm just saying, should we just split that one out of the original recommendation and make another recommendation on its own?
Um, but let's just see what Counselor Devereux comes up with, I, I know it's a bit, there's been a misunderstanding there, and we have a mover in a second, but let's see if we can work through the process. And if councillors are happy with what Counselor Devereux comes up with, then let's do it, if not, we can split it, if we need to, Counselor Devereux.
Um, stage two. Amending stage two. To thirty days after reminder notice due date, did you want me to read the action type or? You're just changing fourteen to thirty.
Stage two would change that.
Thirty days after the due date. I'd be comfortable, very comfortable with that.
Then the action type, you'd have to change that to thirty.
Yes, that would change the action type as well, wouldn't it?
It will, um, and through you, Mr. Mayor, it will push the action very close to the issue of the next rate notice. So what we're trying to do is engage with the council, the ratepayers before that next issue, next rates issue, or, sorry, next rate notice is issued. Um, this will push that very close to when, so we'll be sending letters of demand or referring to debt collection shortly before the next rate notice.
But I've dated up the days, we've got twenty-one, fourteen, fourteen, fourteen in there, which is less than three months, so.
Sorry, you've got thirty days to start where the rates notice is issued.
Yes, okay, that's still a month and a half. I do understand the point, but.
Counselor Stewart.
Mr. Mayor, I just wonder whether thirty days is a bit too long, and maybe twenty-one days, three weeks, it gives a bit of extra chance and.
My point is that not everyone gets paid fortnightly, so this would mean that people who get paid.
The twenty-one, twenty-one, so they've had a fair bit of chance, really.
Counselor Fredman.
May not have an answer for this, but when rates aren't paid, there's two reasons, I suspect, one is because people are in financial difficulty. The other reason is they're in accounting difficulty, and over the years, I've known some people who are quite wealthy, who just don't bother paying rates. Have you got any idea what proportion of people who come, come to us through this policy, uh, have financial troubles versus the ones who have accounting troubles, for want of a better word?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no.
Okay.
Half, half.
That's a serious concern, Mr. Mayor, giving, there's, there's a number of people who just don't like council and don't like paying rates. And to give them more opportunity to not pay, I, I've got a concern about that, and it's, it's a significant portion of the outstanding rates. And, um, I just question who we're trying to help here?
Not them.
But had you just.
The way the motion is going, it does help them.
You can't, they're encouraged, I can't wait, it's an incentive.
Counselor Polly.
So I just, I've got to make a statement, um, i- in relation to this thing, I, I, I agree with Counselor Devereux, I know where he's going. I suppose my personal experience in, when I've had to get debt recovery in my business, the, the longer you leave it, the harder it actually gets. You just want to, the whole point of this is to make contact, to get a dialogue happening, but if there's no dialogue because you can't, for whatever reason, for thirty days, it just gets more and more difficult for those people to, yeah, so in a way, I'm, I, I, I know where you're at, and I want to vote for it, but I'm like nah, because I just want to get the process happening somewhere, somehow, because I, it's, my, my general experience with the organisations being they're very helpful and they want to help people, and it, and I think as soon as they're having engagement with you, well, all this sort of goes away, technology, doesn't it?
Yeah, if they, through you, Mr. Mayor, if they enter into a payment plan and all this gap, all this noise has taken off the table, but you are right, um, Counselor Policy. Polly. This policy is designed to establish interaction with those people who are experiencing difficulties, um, and we've just had an update. So once we initiate this process, when we start to go down, just before we issue to debt recovery, fifty percent of people pay the full account um, within the issue, within, shortly after the issue of the notice.
Sadly, this will forever be known as Polly's policy.
But councillors, Counselor Devereux has suggested a, a change there, is there any, I, I feel the route might be, I voted on this, is there any middle ground that could be reached, um, maybe twenty-one days rather than thirty, is that something?
I still think thirty, just because people get paid monthly, it just gives them that extra, we have engaged, we are engaging with people.
The, the amendment, you're a man, you have to take your.
I, I would like to stick with.
Thirty, twenty-one, I'm being there, two, four months.
I'll vote for it if you say twenty-one, otherwise I'm going to vote no. If this goes down, you propose it.
We have an amended, uh, amendment there from Counselor Devereux in relation to the recommendations, um. I guess we'll, we'll go and vote on the amendment, is there someone to second?
I'll second.
Counselor Jensen, um, Counselor Devereux to speak.
Thank you, yeah, uh, at the end of the day, we're talking about an additional two weeks over the entire, the entire timeframe here for the, um, the recovery policy. I, I think we've got to be careful when it comes to this sort of thing, where we're hurting the people who need it, need not to be hurt the most, who are genuinely suffering from financial problems, because we're worried about someone that's just not paying their rates for the sake of, you know, they don't like council, that person, okay, this isn't about them, this is about the people that are doing it tough. We live in a low socio-economic area, we have a, a period at the moment with high inflation, higher than usual inflation, we've got interest rates going up, we've got people's mortgages going through the roof, a lot of people ha- are new to buying property, young people, okay? They, they are not, have not been aware of interest rate fluctuations as people our age are. And, um, I, I fear that they've, they've stepped out a little too boldly sometimes when it comes to their mortgages. And I don't think, um, adding additional debt, which is what this is about, what I'm asking us to postpone for two weeks, fourteen days, I don't think giving them additional debt in the form of a debt recovery fee is going to help them. And I think for the sake of fourteen days, so that people who get paid monthly have a, an extra pay period to try and sort this out, is not a bad idea. We are engaging already with them, we've sent out the, um, the notice, we've sent out the, the late notice. So we are engaging, they are aware of it, it's just giving them a chance to try and sort their finances out, and that's why I'm proposing, thank you.
Counselor Jensen.
Counselor Policy. Um, you, I, I'm not sure if you've ever been in a position where you can't pay the rates, but I've worked in the debt collection part of a bank, and I've seen the broken people come in when they do engage, um, it's tough, it's really tough, and, and I, and I think that's because we've worked in banks, we get to see, you know, where those people come from and, um, and how we can help them, and, and thirty days is like a standard timeframe um, in the banks for that, it's never, we'd never go on the attack after two weeks, so, um. So that's, uh, yeah, I think, you know, that's two weeks really for us, but it's, it's a lot for a person that needs that extra hundred dollars out of their next pay.
The two speakers for the recommendation, any speakers against? Well, right, Counselor, we'll go, Counselor Fredman, then Polly, then Smorden.
My, my heart says to support this, my head says no, the existing policy has served us well. And two weeks isn't going to help anyone really anywhere if they've got financial problems. So given that we have to govern for all people as best we can, I think the proven track record of our existing policy means that we should just leave it as it is, I've heard good reports about staff having empathy when people with genuine troubles come to us, and I'd like to think that that has worked well.
Counselor Polly.
So I need to ask another question now, because the way Counselor Devereux phrased his support, w- we're adding the cost of the debt recovery to their fee, we are actually. So it will cost them more in the long run, rather than, okay, that's all, that's all, all I want to check too, because, although the way I looked at this is, it's not about trying to um, hurt them more, but just to, um, get the engagement happening, and that's what I'm with, Mr. Counselor Fredman, to just get, get a conversation started, and even if they're paying fifty bucks a week, some small amount, it's, it's something happening. Because would it not be then, when you engage with them, you go, I'm going to get paid on this day, I will pay you money then, and that, so that's an arrangement. So it doesn't have to be right now if they can't afford it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, as soon as they enter into an engage, engagement, a payment arrangement, and it can be, I will pay you this in the future, and I will commit to trying to pay these amounts going forward, we, we don't add any legal or collection costs to their debt.
Mm-hmm, all right, thank you.
Counselor Smorden.
Yeah, I think it's, the way it is at the moment, it's pretty fair, they have thirty days from the issue of the rate notice to pay, in that thirty days, they can go and see finance and set up a payment plan, because I think the people you're trying to protect won't be able to come up with that amount of money, that extra thirty days you're trying to give them. So they will need a payment plan anyway, so, or not start, and as soon as they get the notice, they can see, so, council staff have sent it up. So I can't really see why, what we would achieve by extending this.
Any other speakers for or against? Counselor Devereux to close.
At the end of the day, as I've said, it's fourteen days that I'm suggesting we give the ratepayer, uh, additional time just to get their, their finances in order. I will just add, um, mentally, if people are in financial hardship, it is, it is difficult to move, it's difficult to make a phone call. And it, it is, as common sense as, as it sounds, to pick up the phone and make that call, it is difficult to do. Uh, at the end of the day, we have empathy written into our corporate plan, and I'm suggesting that we use it with this motion, thank you.
With that, we'll go to vote, all those in favour, Counselor Jensen, Counselor Devereux, those against? Counselor Stewart, Polly, Wallock, Smorden, Hartwick, Mill, and Fredman, the amendment is unsuccessful. But we'll go back to the original amendment, uh, if there's Counselor Smorden, Counselor, Counselor Polly, and Counselor Smorden wish to remain as the mover in second. Yes, they do, too, we have some recommendations there before us, um, Counselor Polly to speak.
Uh, uh, let's move, move on, um, however, at some point, I would like to revisit Counselor Devereux's and Counselor Jensen's, um, their issues around the legal represented the debt recovery and adding that cost to them, so we can show some compassion to people, but we can do that after we have a policy to work on, so I'm happy to move it as is, and then we'll get on with it.
Uh, Counselor Smorden.
Uh, okay, it's Counselor Polly's sentiments, I thought we'd already commented on this, but anyway, uh, I'm happy to second.
The two speakers for the recommendation, any speakers against? Any other speakers for, Counselor Waldo.
I'm here for the ratepayer, not the non-payer, I give them an inch, and they'll take it a mile, yeah, I'm going to give them an incentive not to pay.
Any other speakers for or against, Counselor Polly to close?
Oh, nothing further to add.
With that, we'll go to vote, all those in favour. Uh, against, carry, good. Um, item three point four, the twenty-three, twenty-four revenue statement, about how the district's.
Mr. Mayor and councillors, the reporting for your consideration is the adoption of the revenue statement. The revenue statement is specifically required to be prepared as part of the council's budget documents, it's required as part of the local government regulation, this document provides details in relation to the rates and utility charges. It includes categories and category descriptions, minimum general rates, rates in the dollar. It also, um, talks about our utility charges for waste, for cleansing, for water and sewage, and it has a special levy in there for bushfire, um, levy, and there are a paragraph about remissions for pensioners as well. So this is your all-encompassing, um, statement in relation to the detail around your rates and charges.
Any questions, councillors? Counselor Polly.
Yep, uh, so page thirteen of the agenda, section two, report, paragraph four, where it actually details the percentage increases. Um, so the way, just, I'm trying to clarify it for the public listening, because the way you read that, we're all getting hit with a six point eight one percent increase in rates, but the way I understand it, we've gone with a five point five percent increase to keep it in line with CPI. Um, all the other increases are consumption charges, so everybody's going to be paying five point five at least, but not everybody's going to pay six point eight one, which is what that paragraph reads like.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the six point eight one is actually a legislative requirement as part of the bu- budget documents. The last of, um, budget statements talks about the increase of yield. Um, the increase of yield of rates is a comparison of last year's actual, so the twenty-two, twenty-three actual collections of rates um, compared to what the budget is, so it's not actually an increase for.
So it's not actually an increase for an individual, it's the increase of the pool of rates revenue that council gets. Um, you're correct in terms of the minimum general. We've tried to look at um, a variety of different modelling to try and um, mitigate the impact of the land valuation route we received and we applied a five and a half percent increase for the general rate. Um, the other rates and charges, we've increased, I think it's water connections, sewerage and waste collection of six point five percent and the water consumption went up to five point se- sorry, seven point five percent. That was a recommendation because our water charges are slightly less than where we think they should be and we've been gradually increasing the water consumption. Um, the average, and this is where we start, having lots of different percentages when it comes in, but the average um, increase for rate payers was six point, sorry, five, what, Michelle, was it five point? There are quite a few, but you're right, the water consumption is dependent on being on water. The, and sewerage and water connection also only apply if you're in that, those particular areas.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I might add that uh, when we look at our surrounding councils and the comparators that they produce, a lot of our councils to the south of us don't have water and sewerage charges. So when we're comparing ourselves, we always like to use the five point five percent general rate increase. Uh, the six point eight one, I know we're, we're probably getting into a little bit of murky area, includes allowance of one point five percent um, in the growth in the number of residential properties. And as Ms. Heatherall said, we've included our water consumption at seven point five and the other fees and charges at six point five. Uh, the vast majority of people in the region will pay uh, less than a hundred dollars a week. Um, and, and that equates to less than a dollar ninety-five, sorry, a hundred dollars per year. Um, and that equates to less than a dollar ninety-five per week is the overall increase in council rating bill or rating burden to our rate payers. So vast majority, I think it's seventy-eight percent, pay, will pay less than a hundred dollars a year or less than a dollar ninety-five per week.
So the way I understand, because when I read that paragraph, it looked like we're all going up six point eight one percent, but you're saying that in the budget, you know, we'll, we had like an eighty-five million dollar, whatever's revenue, that's now ninety-one million, so that's, that's the six point eight one that we have to increase our revenue. But the actual fact is that some people will be contributing less than five point five percent and some people are contributing ten percent or more.
That's right.
But yeah, yeah, so, so some people would be very minimal.
And um, that is a legislative requirement that we have to publish that figure.
Yep, yep, it just, just the way it read, it looked like we were hitting like six point eight one, but that's, it's not.
Any other questions, councillors? We have a lengthy recommendation there before us, is there somewhere to move? Council Stuart, somewhere to second. Council Mel, Council Stuart to speak.
Uh, most of us don't like paying rates. I do know one resident who says we should be paying more rates, as long as it's spent on the right stuff, but um, um, but we need, we need to contribute to the good order of our community and to me, that's what this is about. Um, some people pay a greater rate in the dollar than others, um, trying to balance things out, I guess. But, um, we, I can assure the community, we've spent many hours trying to work out what, how much the rates should be and who should be paying more or less rates. Um, and we think we've come up with a fair rating system, so I'm happy to move that we adopt this revenue statement.
Council Mel.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, council needs revenue to run. Um, yes, we do pay, some of that revenue does come in rates, which is not a fee for service, it's basically a land tax to run the council. However, our services are reflected on the service that we need to provide, so there is those differential, what we need to do, um, and how to fund those. No one likes paying rates, myself, probably no one, but it is necessary for us to run. It's our, it's our prudence after this and how we utilise those funds to run the council. So yeah, the revenue statement just states how we're going to do it and how much we're projecting forward, so yeah, happy to have this um, moved and second.
Two speakers for the recommendation, any speakers against? Any other speakers for? Council Fredman.
Mr. Mayor, we will cop criticism because there are a number of councils around us who have increased their rates less than this and there are some that have increased the same amount. In my opinion, having sat through again the deliberations, I think five point five percent's very responsible. Look, it'd be too easy and it would be beneficial from a reelection perspective for us to have chosen a lower number. But I think as councillors for everyone and councillors for the long term, we do need to keep our income up to speed with our costs. And during the process, we've heard some interesting figures about where our costs are going. I heard a figure of seven percent at one stage as being the net increase in the cost to run this council. So I think five point five percent is very responsible, it means we're going to have to absorb a bit. It, it all comes back, I suppose, to what people think they get for their rates. And, you know, in my opinion, currently, road maintenance in the Mary Valley is way behind. And for what it's worth, I don't believe a star rating will help that. What's going to solve the problem is having the funds and the resources and the capability to do road maintenance. I'm confident that a responsible budget like this one will ensure that we've got the funds. I know as a council, we've been working hard on the resources and with a number of changes, we're working on the capability in order to get back to where we want to be in terms of road maintenance. So it's important for the big picture to just, for me, not to consider um, current road maintenance standards. I'm, I'm positive we'll catch up. We've had a few hiccups. But otherwise, our costs may be around seven percent, I did hear that figure at one stage, so five point five, as unpalatable as it is, a bit like the old, my heart says, well, Bundaberg, I think, went zero and other councils have been three, but my head says if our costs have risen by possibly seven percent and five point five percent is the minimum we can put rates up, and I think it's a very responsible position to take for the future. That's my opinion.
Council Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I think Council Fredman has been all right on the head. Council is after all the business and we do have to cover our costs. Uh, I think we've been quite responsible with our five point five. And as far as the rates go, I agree with him. Um, we were starting to tend to fall on our roads before we got to the massive flood. It's put us back well behind the rate ball again, but um, I think in the next twelve months to, two years, we will turn that around again and have our rates back to where we actually, I'm quite confident in what we're doing and I think that the future is bright for council.
Any other speakers for or against? As far as to um, reiterate, some of the sentiments of councillors, um, being responsible isn't always popular, but I think this council over this term has always been responsible in the way that they've administered rates and funds and looked at all times to be fair and equitable in our rating process. We have a long deliberation process, um, so that we can um, consider things in detail and care. A lot of staff time and effort has gone into ensuring that um, all the concerns that councillors have are, are met and dealt with. Now, as, as councillors have pointed out, no one likes paying rates, just like no one likes paying taxes, but they are a necessary part of ensuring that our democratic society remains and functions as it does. And um, I believe the five point five percent, as um, as difficult as that is, it's a sign of a responsible council that is um, willing to do what needs to be done rather than willing to do what might be considered popular. So I commend councillors for their effort uh, with this budget and, and the other budgets that we've done. Um, Council Stuart to, to close.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to add that um, well, each rate payer on average will pay five point five percent more on general rates because of the land revaluations, it's going to vary within categories, so unfortunately, some people will be paying a larger increase, other people will enjoy, in fact, a reduction. Um, that's beyond our control, but certainly within each category, the average increase is five point five percent. So I'm happy to move that we endorse this policy, statement, sorry.
With that, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. Item three point five, the competition reform. You know, the rest of us, Heatherall again.
Mr. Mayor and councillors, the report for you for your consideration is in relation to the competition reform policy. Um, councils require to, um, to consider applying the code of competitive conduct to certain business activities if they meet the definition of a significant business activity. Council has the water, the wastewater, waste management and also the business, um, sorry, the building services units, all considered um, as part of this regulation. Um, our recommendation is that each one of those business units have the code of competitive conduct applied um, by the application of a full cost pricing um, business model to the units.
Any questions, councillors? We have a recommendation there before us, is there somewhere to move? Council Stuart, Council Smith at second, Council Stuart to speak.
Mayor, um, I guess we need to be competing fairly with the private sector, we need to make sure our businesses are run efficiently, um, and that they pay an appropriate dividend. I, I guess my one concern is, and I think tomorrow, in one of the reports or tomorrow's meeting mentions that we are behind in the asset management of our water and sewer network. And yet, I think, um, these documents talk about six point eight million dollars going from water and sewerage business into, into general revenue, so I, I question whether the dividend we're taking from water and sewerage is at the cost of in upgrading our, renewing our assets in water and sewerage. And I've known of raised that issue over the years. But we have to be competitive, we have to show that their business is running efficiently and so I'm happy to, is it endorse these policies?
Council Smith.
Okay, I say we are a business and we have to um, provide a service. We also have to maintain that service, so we have to make sure that we make enough money to maintain that service in a respectable manner. Um, so to go competitively is only the natural way to go, that's why I've got concern, so I'm quite happy to say.
Two speakers for the recommendation, any speakers against? Any other speakers for? Council Waldo.
Uh, what was I going to say? I put water up there with um, the importance of uh, oxygen, you need it, otherwise you die. Um, and uh, it's not free to make um, dirty old creek water into drinking water. Um, we've got to cover the costs. Um, it's a, a good business ethic to have and uh, I, I believe that we're down the bottom of the cheapest in any council around the region, we need to be competitive and have a good look at ourselves and at, and others and compare, benchmark.
Any other speakers for or against? Council Stuart to close.
Nothing further to add, thanks.
With that, we'll go to vote. All those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. Item three point six, adoption of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and long-term financial forecast.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, this report deals with the adoption, as you've indicated, of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and the long-term forecast twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-two, thirty-three. Uh, sections one sixty-nine, one seven, two oh five of the local government regulation prescribe the requirements that must be included in this report. Um, and this report complies with the disclosure requirements of the regulation. The budget, um, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget totals two hundred and thirty-four point three five million dollars and will be the largest budget um, ever adopted by Gimpie Regional Council. The budget presents an overall surplus of seventy-seven point four six million dollars with operational expenditure of a hundred and twenty-eight million and a capital works programme totaling a hundred and twelve million dollars. The opera, it's worth noting that the operational budget includes uh, six point three seven million dollars of extraordinary items that are not considered business as usual. These projects include a new enterprise resource planning solution, which is basically replacement of our core systems, house connections for the Southside Sewerage Project and the preparation of a new planning scheme. Total budgeted revenues for the year are two hundred and five point four six million, which includes capital revenues of eighty-three point oh eight million. Excluding capital revenues and the extraordinary items discussed, our operating surplus is zero point seven five million dollars. The operating result, including the extraordinary items, is a deficit of five point six two million dollars. Council's two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget is supported by a long-term financial plan which documents the assumptions and parameters council has used to develop the budget. The adoption of the long-term financial plan and the financial sustainability policy as part of this budget meeting demonstrate council's commitment to improve financial sustainability. And while these documents are not required by legislation, they are seen as better practice methods to improve our financial forecasting and budgeting. Over the life of the model, um, the, our financial sustainability ratios, including an additional re- um, ratio that's not required by legislation being the cash expense coverage ratio, um, all show on average that all the measures are within the required target ranges as set out by the um, the department. The two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget maintains the improvement in council's cash expense cover, coverage ratio with the targeted cash balance being greater than three months um, on average. And over the life of the model, council maintains on average a cash coverage ratio of three point, uh, three point nine percent. The budget builds upon the work that's done by the current council and its previous budgets. Um, it maintains its um, debt capacity, addresses um, the inherited um, cash issue that was inherited by the cash, the current council, um, and over the life of the model returns a um, council's operating surplus ratio back to the target range.
Thank you, uh, through yourself, Chair. Uh, just as we move into this major report, the budget forms a major pillar in a local government mission. Both the elected members and many officers have been part of the considerable work in drafting this document and I just especially thank the elected members for their leadership decisions, uh, Mr. Lewis and Ms. Heatherall, directors, finance team members here today for their commitment, not to the process only, but to the community in making the decisions that are in front of you today in draft form. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions, councillors? We have, uh, Council Polly.
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Uh, a couple of the major variances were depreciation and then also employee costs. So I look at the depreciation, we're saving almost six mil because the rail. And is that ongoing, just six mil now, that's it, every year, six mil?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that, that shows the, that, that's the impact of taking the rail assets off their books.
Yep.
So that is a, a comparison to the previous year.
Yep.
Um, but that saving of six million dollars is ongoing.
Yep, which would go down, but yes, it's not just now, it's, and then, so, so the same things with, there's a quite a chunky bit for employee costs. Was that because of back pays and stuff or is that's, that would be consistently a couple million dollars then it would have been ongoing? If that's, that's the right question.
The variance in employee cost reflects the uh, percentage increase in certified agreement.
Yep.
Um, and there are, looking to the future, there are further percentage increases that, that have been agreed to over the next two financial years.
Yep, so yeah, it'll be ongoing as well, yep.
Any other questions, councillors? Have a recommendation there before us, there's somewhere to move. I'm happy to move. Council Smith at second. Um, councillors, we've been through a long process, uh, this term of rebuilding the organisation financially. Um, it hasn't been uh, something that has often been received in, in a sense of popularity. Um it hasn't been uh something that has often been received in, in a sense of popularity. But I uh commend you all for the consistent uh effort over the last uh three years. To ensure that we put this organisation there for this community into a position where financially going forward. Decisions can be made about investments in, in community assets that will benefit our region for the next twenty, thirty and forty years. It has been a challenge to maintain that steadfast approach, that back to basics, repairing an organisation. Particularly when you arrive in circumstances where uh the first order of call is to pursue an overdraft. To cover committed expenses from a previous council. Um the challenges of COVID and, and flooding and accessing Q R A funding hasn't assisted. Uh our community or organisation. Um but again, we have remained steadfast in our uh resolution to ensure we're active with. Prudent financial responsibility, delivering services to our community. Um but not looking to go on a spendathon simply to um. To change the way some people may feel a- about council. Um this is our last budget in this term and I think it's a credit to every elected representative sitting around the table. That we are leaving the organisation in a far better position than we inherited it. Not many councillors um often get to say that. And considering where we started and where we are now. Um irrespective of what some people may say. We have done a tremendous job to turn around what was a significantly sinking shift, ship financially. And put ourselves in a much better position. Um I don't believe there's any elected representative sitting at the table that would think that the job is done. That it's um, that there is not more, more work to be done in that space. And I could not imagine any of us being complacent in any way um in the coming years if we are reelected. But it's been a pleasure to work through these budget processes with you all. I'm grateful for your input and your commitment to the region as a whole. And that we have often put aside um. Quick fixes or, or money grabs for popularity, simply to build a strong foundation for our community. That will allow um future elected representatives to deliver on projects that had we had not been considered and careful. Um with our finances, those opportunities may not be there. Um I'm happy to recommend this budget to you for adoption. And um I'd also like to thank the staff for their effort over the last three years. In the preparation of budgets and dealing with our financial challenges. Um and, and every other challenge that we've faced. Uh and to still desire to move forward and put ourselves in a, in a much better financial position. Is something that we can all be proud of. Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I totally agree with the mayor's sentiments on this. Um it's been a very, very hard term for this council, I think. With COVID and two floods. Um I'd like to thank all the staff involved in the process and councillors, I think. It's been a very hard job, but we've done, I think the fairest job that we can for all who are involved. Um you know, we have to be responsible, we have to run a business, we have to stay sustainable. I think this is a good, a good policy, a good re- uh budget and I think, you know, from now on, it should be. Should be easier for us, I think, to, to keep it going that way. So I'm, what have you got, seven, thank you, sir.
Two speakers for the recommendation, any speakers against? Any other speakers for? Councillor Fredman.
Mr Mayor, in twenty twenty, when we assembled for the first time. We agreed that we had to go into uh budget repair mode. And we had actually, uh, we had a number of statements uh before us titled, entitled budget repair. So we, we basically went into what you'd call limp mode for a while. We uh, we adopted a policy of back to basics, no more flash, just getting, getting back to what the rate payers want and providing it. Certainly, we've survived COVID, we've survived floods, but we've survived more than that. I, I understand, it's a personal understanding that state government's no longer looking at us seriously. And that's, that's a huge step forward. Um I think by the end of this term. We can say job complete. We've nailed it.
Any other speakers for or against? Councillor Miller.
Um for. Uh this is a scary budget. When I said it, like you said, it is one of the biggest budgets or the biggest budget that we've ever done. The Capital Works Programme in itself is a scary Capital Works Programme. We were looking at over a hundred and eleven million dollars. Which even like forty million used to scare us. Now that's figures. Um in saying that uh there are some good, exciting projects in there, which a lot of it is our re-. Finally actually getting those works on that everyone's wanted what um done for the last couple of years. There has been a massive process to get those funds to do that. Uh so that's really exciting to have happen. Um just like to highlight some stuff um from down my way, which is the coastal treatment plants, which councillor Stewart was like reinvest back into the, the. Um projects for Onakei, Clorico Water Treatment Plant. Uh we're looking at the Rainbow Beach Waterfield Dump Point and Crab Creek uh Road Control. These are the things that were brought up at the start of the term, but we haven't been able to do those. So it's actually exciting to have them start to come through as project, but the biggest one was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for an off-leash dog park. And in a budget where it says um it's limited scope for new projects, I was really happy to have that. Um included in the Capital Works Programme because it was a voice from the people that have actually asked for that for three years con- uh consistently. I was actually one of the first letters, like, oh, it is a council. So happy to have those little tiny small things in a budget, but yeah, absolutely massive Capital Works Programme. And it, it does have a deficit budget, but we do have some extraordinary uh items in there which are necessary for our council. And especially that um the grit project which is going through, which is hopefully going to make our council run better. So that's a huge investment, but. Um it is for our future and the most foundations. So we are in a good position to keep moving forward. So yeah, happy to have this budget um adopted.
Any other speakers that are closed? Again, just reiterate um the, the words of councillors. And, and also acknowledge that there is a significant capital programme that will mostly be done by contractors. An organisation doesn't have the capability to deal with uh such a huge amount of um. Q R A funding uh to deal with the road network that was damaged significantly last year. It'll be great to see that amount of money being poured back into our asset. Um so that some rate payers can look for improvements in their road network over the next twelve months. Um again, I'd just like to, to thank councillors for um stick, staying the course. To put this community back in a space financially where we can start to invest in the things that um, that we need. And, and that matter to us. And it has been a tough three years to do that. It has been very challenging. And um I appreciate the uh consistent desire to achieve that for the outcome. And also again, the staff who have worked hard, particularly in, in events and, and other areas where we haven't performed that well. They have, in the past, we have um put on a consistent number of. National and state events uh on the smell of an oily rag. That delivers considerable financial benefits to our businesses in our region. And um this budget continues to support the growth in that space and the economic activity that develops. So uh thank you, everyone, and um I hope that you will support this budget. With that, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Again, Harry, thank you. Item three point seven, the twenty three twenty four financial sustainability policy. You know, Miss Heatherall or Mr Lewis?
Mr Mayor and councillors, this report is in relation to the financial sustainability and the long term financial plan. These documents are not part of requirements under the legislation. However, they do address a recommendation made by Queensland Plaidots in two thousand and seventeen. These policies set out broad, bright based um concepts and constructions around our future sustainability. About how we go about planning for our financial sustainability over the next ten years. And it's something that is documented so that councillors have some confidence in the fact that we have included parameters. Which are reasonable in those outer years. The report's for your consideration.
Any questions, councillors? Have a recommendation there before us, is there someone to move? Councillor Stewart, someone to second. Councillor Moore, councillor Stewart speak.
Um it's really hard to predict the future. I used to work in an area, predict the future and we've got it wrong for them, right? Um some of the, the, it's good to see what assumptions you used. I, I questioned a couple of the assumptions, but then. We probably all questioned some of the assumptions. I'm not convinced the assumptions were interest rates or um such like, but that's all right. It's, it sets out how we think we're going to go in the long term and. We're not just here from year to year, we're not just here even from one election to another, we're here for the long term. This is ten years, we're here really for twenty, thirty years. So um it's good to have this long term plan, long term forecast, policy. So I'm happy to move that we adopted it.
Councillor Smith.
Uh exactly right, councillor Stewart. We have to look for, look to the future, we have to remain sustainable. And this is one way which we try to, to remain sustainable, so that is.
Two speakers for the recommendation, any speakers against? Any other speakers for? Councillor Stewart to close.
Nothing further to add, thanks.
That will go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Harry, that concludes our special meeting for today.